Fabulous. Let me get to my correct script. Not where I want to be.
Thank you, I'm falling apart here, thank you.
So, good afternoon, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we get a roll call?
Robert Byrd.
Present.
Alma Cortez.
Present.
Priya Batra.
Here.
Astrid Hager.
Here.
Abigail Marquez. Summer McBride.
Here.
Brandon Nichols. Carol Segala. Deanne Tilton Durfee. Jaclyn McCroskey. Alejandra Aberon Moses.
Present.
Maricela Ramirez.
Present.
And Holly Mitchell.
Present.
Coram is present.
Thank you very much, good afternoon, everyone. I understand that there are no AB 2449 remote requests for this meeting, correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's proceed with Agenda Item Number Three. It's a report out of the Board's closed session from earlier today. We'll hear from Council on this item.
Yes, Chair, so for purposes of the Brown Act, there was no reportable action taken during closed session, but I'm aware you'd like, you have additional comments you'd like to make during Item Five.
Five, yes, thank you. All right, no reportable items, thank you very much. Let's proceed to Agenda Item Number Four, which is our consent agenda, and Ms. Voe is going to have to read a recusal for myself.
That is correct, Madam Chair. On Item 4G, Madam Chair, you are recusing yourself pursuant to Government Code Section 84308 because you received a contribution or contributions of more than $500 within the past 12 months from Elaine Bachelor and Bruce Pollock, who are parties, participants, or agents of a party or participant in the proceeding. As such, we will be taking Items A through F and then H through I first.
Thank you. Should we go ahead and is there any member, any board member that wishes to address a consent item or pull something off of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, should we take public comment on the consent agenda? And then we'll take the vote? Any public comment on for A through F?
Confirming there are no public comments.
Is there any public comment on Agenda Items for H through I?
Confirming there are no public comments.
All right, there's no public comment. Can I get a motion on a consent Agenda Items for A through F and for H through I? Roll call, or can I do it through acclamation?
I'm going to do roll call for this.
Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you. Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Alma Cortez.
Yes.
Priya Batra.
Yes.
Astrid Hager. Summer McBride.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yeah.
Motion is passed.
Thank you, I'm gonna, do I have to step out? Or can I just sit here or not?
You can sit.
Okay, so I will ask Vice Chair if you will manage the discussion on Item 4G that I had to recuse myself from.
Okay, and there are already established no comments, no public comments on 4G?
Confirming there are no public comments on Item 4G.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Roll call? Is, yes, seconded by Commissioner.
Thank you for that. Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Alma Cortez.
Yes.
Priya Batra.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yeah.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
And Kara Segala.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you all. Commissioners, based on our need to try to keep today's agenda as brief as possible, I'd like to move that we continue Agenda Items Nine, Ten, and Eleven to either the August or October regular Board meeting dates. Items Nine and Eleven are informational items, and Item Ten is a scheduled meeting break. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Voe, please call the roll.
Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Alma Cortez.
Yes.
Priya Batra.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Kara Segala.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
I hear it. Um, can someone, one of your security guards just kind of go out and check and just give us an assessment? Because if we need to adjourn sooner, just so we have information about what's happening in the community.
So, lots of good stuff.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, it does, and it sounds. Thank you for that. Colleagues, let's move on to Agenda Item Five, which is remarks from your chair. So, good afternoon. Let me begin by expressing my deep appreciation for your continued dedication and courageous leadership. It's in a time marked by civil disobedience, uncertainty around immigration policies, and the evolving needs of our youngest children and their families, that your steadfast commitment has never been more critical or more encouraging. And again, I thank each of you for your service to the county, its children, and this commission. Needless to say, we, these aren't easy days, but it's in moments like these when communities are shaken and families are seeking hope that we, as leaders, must shine the brightest. So, you're the ones who hold the line, who carry forward the vision of equity, dignity, and care for every child regardless of their background, birthplace, or zip code. I hope that we will all remember the decisions that we make here today are not just policies and programs, they are a reflection of principles and values. To stand strong for the vulnerable, to remain rooted in justice, and to move forward together even when the road is uncertain. So, I thank you for showing up and showing out. And I thank you for leading, and I thank you for standing firm in hope, unity, and action. I'd also like to just share with the public that we, as a Board, have heard from our President and supported the vision and plans for the next year per performance, that we, as a Board, conducted an annual performance appraisal as we do every year. Again, let me thank the Board and the Executive Committee for the time you take to go through that process. And I just want to acknowledge publicly what the Board communicated to the CEO as a result of that process. The Board recognizes and appreciates your leadership of First Five LA to help the Board address the organization's significant financial challenges. Completing the forward-looking sustainability framework and long-term financial plan clarifies the relationship between First Five LA's fiscal realities into alignment with our long-term goals and provides a roadmap toward the community outcomes we see. This work was accomplished with transparency, accountability, and trust. The Board appreciates your efforts to bring stakeholders, staff, and the Board together to find unique solutions. Despite the challenges posed by decreasing revenue and political uncertainties, you have kept the organization focused on achieving systemic changes and policy wins, always rooted in equity, community voice, and fiscal responsibility. The culture of accountability and innovation you are building is making a difference for the organization's impact. You also were able to achieve program continuity and achieve real measurable progress. The Board commends your efforts to strengthen the relations between staff and the Board and within the Board itself. Your proactive efforts to keep all Board members informed and heard are recognized and appreciated. Board communications from staff are improved and effective, and you and staff have been welcomed to suggestions and ideas. And so, I just, you know, just want to acknowledge to you that your overall evaluation score was, I'm looking for the language, exceeds expectations, I think is a good summary. Again, thank you to the Board for all of your thoughtful time and input in doing the evaluation, and just wanted to make sure that you were aware of our ultimate decision and results. Happy Father's Day to all of those who are Fathers and Father. We appreciate you. Want to thank our Board colleague for these amazing, I've already put mine away, Juneteenth fan, and any opportunity I get to just clap the fan, there it is. Thank you very much, because as we're talking about freedoms, that's what Juneteenth really is, a celebration of freedom. And so, I think for me this year, in particular, it's an important date and an important part of our American history to acknowledge. Because if we know our history, one would argue we wouldn't be making the same mistakes. So, I think that's important. And I also wanted to acknowledge that June is National Safety Month, the annual month of observe, to observe and to prevent injury and death. Any questions of me in the Chair's report? Any comments on the Chair's report from the Board? Thank you, any public comment on Agenda Item Five?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
I appreciate that, that's a receiving file. Let's move on to Agenda Item Six, and let's hear from our President and CEO.
Thank you so much, Chair Mitchell. Really, really appreciate the feedback and partnership and pushing First Five LA to really be, impact equity and think about our sustainability. So, appreciate you. Folks, you all heard the sort of sirens and some additional noise outside in both celebration, hopefully. We're hearing from the team, thank you, John, that it's three protesters at the 101 Overpass. So, as the Chair mentioned, we're going to keep everything shorter because we want to make sure that we focus on the budget, because it is the budget that will get us to what communities will need really, really immediately. I'm going to keep my comments really, really brief. We were supposed to come back to the Board and give you an overview of Nancy Stroll's summary of what you all shared. We have long notes about that. We're going to put it in a memo instead and share some of that, and then put it, bring it back August or October to make sure that we're sharing it publicly. But in light of what's happening, we want to make sure that we're focused on making sure that we have time to get your input on the budget. The one thing that is really important to recognize is the people at First Five LA, and she's going to hate that we're doing this. But we want to recognize Jamie, who will be transitioning. She's heading back hometown, Monroe, North Carolina, to begin a new beautiful journey related to clinical mental health counseling. Yes. Jamie has been with First Five LA since 2018. She has carried cakes for people coming down here. She's often behind the scenes, really quick to respond to all of you. She helps us prepare, of course, in partnership with Linda and Hannah. But Jamie, your quiet strength, you are brilliant. You are so warm. You are always making sure that others are taken care of. And this is a career path that is so perfect for you and so needed during these times. So, we want to recognize you and wish we had more people here to celebrate with you. But you have been instrumental in making these meetings happen and making us all always feel included and responded to. So, we will start by having Molly share a small gift, and then I will turn it over to Linda, who will, I'm sure, no crying, Linda, no crying.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try. The board is okay with you crying around and just putting drag on your hair.
Please. Okay, I'll try to make this as quickly as possible, but I feel like Jamie needs this time. So, today, Jamie, we are here to say farewell to celebrate you, someone who has been a steady, thoughtful, and deeply valued part of our First Five LA Board of Relations team. So, you joined us, as you know, Carla mentioned, back in 2018 as a temp, and few of us could have predicted just how central you would become and become such a rhythm and heart of First Five LA and Board Relations work. By 2019, you were on full-time officially, and you've helped support us through countless agendas, board packets, tight turnarounds, and more meetings than we can even reasonably remember. Because back in the days, we had meetings four times a month before, I think, most of you all came here. Carla, you were here. And, you know, this week, Jamie, our city is once again bearing witness to the urgent need for justice, humanity, and compassion in how systems treat people, particularly immigrants and families. And in the middle of that, it just feels especially important to recognize the kind of quiet leadership and principled commitment that you have brought to this work. You've shown us how to move with integrity, how to keep things grounded when everything around us feels uncertain, and how to support a mission that's about more than just the next deadline. It's about people. So, I'm a big Netflix fan, and I know some of us on the Board are. You know, Summer and I and Dr. Byrd, you've shared shows that we should watch. And there's a line from a show called, from Netflix, it's called "When Life Gives You Tangerines", that says, "Life can start off a bit sour. It's challenging, unpredictable, but with care, commitment, and time, it sweetens." I feel like that resonates with your journey here, Jamie. You ventured quietly, you've learned quickly, and you soon become someone we all leaned on, not just because you are capable, but because you are deeply intentional in how you showed up for the team. I'm going to start to cry. It's through these moments and timeliness that you've brought calm, and through complexity, you've brought order. And in times when our work intersected with the real struggles happening across LA, compared it all with grace and integrity. So, while it's hard to say goodbye, we're also incredibly proud of you, Jamie. You're leaving to pursue your graduate studies. And wherever you go, we know that you will continue to lead with the same values that led you here to First Five LA. Jamie, thank you for your strength, your care, your integrity, and mostly for all the unseen things. We know you do so much more than we all see here. Just wishing you all the best, and may it be a meaningful, may it stretch you in all of the right ways, and may you always reflect on the values, as I mentioned, that brought you here in the first place. We're going to miss you. Great for that. I've worked with two other people who have supported me with board work, and one other person left six years ago. And I've been here for 13 years, and Jamie's the second person.
I'd like to make the official request that Ms. Voe speak at my retirement or my memorial service. Whatever happens to come first, Ms. Voe, will you commit to come speak? Thank you, thank you, I appreciate you.
I'm excited to wrap this up. They did give me a chance to take the podium as well. Love coming after Linda, so apologies, if I lose my cool as well. But thank you both so much, Carla and Linda, for the kind words. And yes, the rumors are true. I am going to be leaving. This is my last Board meeting with First Five LA. I'm currently packing up my life here and heading back home to North Carolina. Sorry. Being immersed in this work since 2018 and witnessing the unwavering dedication of my colleagues and our Board members to the children and families in LA County has been awe-inspiring, especially during such uncertain times. From the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020 to the LA wildfires and civil unrest we're dealing with now in 2025, it has been quite a wild ride here at First Five LA. But I'll always be thankful for the transformative time I've had here in Los Angeles, but especially the time that I've spent working with our Board of Commissioners in support of such a noble cause. Of course, I would be remiss if I didn't give my deep appreciations to my partner in crime, Linda Voe. Words can't describe how much I value Linda's leadership, her guidance, her professionalism, and ultimately, our friendship. Despite the obvious height difference between them, Linda is someone I will always look up to and admire. But all jokes aside, thank you so much, Linda, for the myriad of ways in which you have shaped me as a professional and as a person. So much. I'm also extremely grateful to Hannah Jo for stepping in and assisting Linda with this important work. She's already been a fantastic addition to this team, and I'm so happy that she is able to train with me and to work with us in this transitional time. Thank you so much, Board members, my fellow colleagues, for all the support and kindness over the years. I'm eternally grateful for this chapter in my life, and I'm excited for what's to come next. If you're ever in Charlotte, I am going home to Monroe, like she mentioned, it is a suburb of Charlotte. Probably never heard of it, but if you are in Charlotte, North Carolina, or anywhere in on the East Coast, please let me know. I'd be happy to catch up with you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Beautiful, I think when people are emotional and sad about leaving their workplace, that's a sign of their commitment to work. Because, you know, some people could just be running out that back door. So, we wish you all the luck in Monroe. I know Monroe, Louisiana, I didn't know about Monroe, North Carolina, so I learned something new today. We wish you all the luck, Godspeed. We appreciate you. All right, any public comment on the President's report?
Confirming there are no public comments.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, colleagues, this is a receiving file. It is the public hearing on the receipt and file of First Five California Annual Report. And I hereby call to order to open the public hearing regarding Agenda Item Seven. Let's go ahead and hear the report. From staff? Oh, they're online, got you. We're going to hear from Kimberly Hall, Director of Impact Accountability, and Laura Covar Rubias, Senior Data Strategist. Again, this is our annual report for First Five California.
Hello, everyone, just want to confirm that folks can hear me and can see my screen?
Loud and clear.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, members of the public. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Laura Covar Rubias. I am a Senior Data Strategist with Impact and Accountability Department here at First Five LA. Joining me also remotely is our Director, Kimberly Hall. And today, we're here to talk about First Five California's 2324 Annual Report. So, today's public hearing is intended for us to comply with the annual requirement of reviewing and filing First Five California's annual report for fiscal year 2324. One of the conditions of receiving Prop 10 Tobacco Tax Funds is to hold a public hearing at least once a year to review and file First Five California's annual report. By the end of this Agenda Item, we will have reviewed some of the state highlights from this year's report and close out our annual reporting process for fiscal year 2324. Director Kim Hall will also be providing some updates to next year's annual reporting process as well. So, first, a little bit of background. Under Prop 10, each county commission is required to submit an annual report with data on their revenue and expenditures, populations reached, and key evaluation and county highlights. You may recall, the Department, the Impact and Accountability Department, presented some of the data from our fiscal year 2324 annual report back in September and received approval from Commissioners to submit our annual report data in the last October meeting. After receiving data from all the county commissions, First Five California distills the information into a state annual report, which summarizes the collective efforts of First Five California as an entity and the 58 county commissions. This report is typically released in the following spring. The First Five California Fiscal Year 2324 Annual Report is included in your Board Materials packet for reference. So, diving into some of the highlights from this year's report, starting with finance. Last fiscal year, First Five California's total revenue was nearly $441.5 million. The total statewide expenditures was $382 million. Now, under Prop 10, 20% of all revenue collected from tobacco tax goes to First Five California, and the 80% remaining goes to the county commissions. First Five California uses its funding to work, to fund work such as the Impact Legacy, which focuses on enhancing the quality of early learning and care environments across the state. First Five California also uses their funding for media campaigns such as Stronger Starts, which focuses on providing educational messaging to caregivers about the dangers of toxic stress to help reduce adverse childhood experiences among the children in the state. Taking a look at the populations served or the populations reached statewide. So, in total, there was nearly 629,000 children who were served across California. For reference, First Five LA served almost 69,000 children, or about 11% of the total children served across the state. 555,000 parents and caregivers were also served statewide, of which First Five LA accounted for almost 85,000, or about 15%. And lastly, 77,000 providers were served statewide through First Five Investments. Now, the First Five California Annual Report also includes highlights provided by the First Five County Commissions. These highlights represent various accomplishments and efforts made by individual commissions throughout the last fiscal year. Just taking a look at some of the items that were mentioned in this last year. The most commonly mentioned themes among these highlights included early childhood education, which focused on early learning, school readiness, and child development programs, and was mentioned a total of 34 times across the commissions. There was also a focus on health and wellness, programs targeting mental health, physical health, nutrition, and wellness for children and families, mentioned 31 times. Community partnerships, collaboration with schools, nonprofits, and local organizations to extend program reach and impact, mentioned 30 times. And parent engagement, initiatives to involve parents through workshops, training, and support groups to enhance caregiving skills, mentioned 23 times across the commissions. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to our Director, our Impact and Accountability Director, Kim Hall, who's going to walk us through some of the future changes to the annual reporting approach.
Thanks, Laura. Before we close, I wanted to just highlight some of the upcoming changes to the state annual reporting process, which are going to go into effect beginning in fiscal year 2526. So, there are three high-level shifts. First, the state is moving from open-ended narratives to structured prompts. This is really intended to create more consistency and clarity across county reports. But one thing to keep in mind is that these structured prompts in some ways limit the flexibilities that counties will have in order to describe their work in their own terms. Second, there's a stronger focus on equity, outcomes, and accountability. So, there are specific prompts that are going to be included as a part of the reporting process that are designed to draw out not just what services were provided, but how those services reach underserved communities and what outcomes they produced. And third, the new format is meant to improve data usability. So, with these standardized questions and responses, First Five California aims to better aggregate and analyze county-level data to show collective statewide impact. It's important to keep in mind that while these changes are framed as technical improvements, many counties see them as a major shift. They have a heavier administrative burden, and there was limited opportunity for input during the development process. With that said, First Five California has committed to continued collaboration. So, there are going to be, there will be a pilot phase that's being planned, which will offer counties a chance to test out this new approach and help to shape its implementation. As for what's next, once the Board receives and files First Five California's annual report for fiscal year 2324, our reporting process for that fiscal year will be complete. And like we do every year, we'll be returning to the Board in the fall with findings from the current fiscal year. That'll include data specific to First Five LA's investments and our impact. So, with that, I'd like to hand it back to Chair Mitchell to receive and file the report and to open the floor for any questions. Thank you.
And thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Yes.
One quick question, so there's an emphasis on equity, outcomes, and accountability, which really kind of, I think, aligns with your goals. I was wondering how prescriptive they are in terms of metrics? Or if it just, if that's open to the county to decide?
It is open to the county to decide. So, they have questions that are encouraging us to speak to how we are able to reach underserved populations, but they don't define those populations or give specific instructions as to, you know, what county. Give specific instructions as to, you know, what counts as, you know, reaching those populations. So it's still open-ended. It's kind of the the content or the things that um our responses will focus on that have been uh a little bit more um prescribed.
Thank you. And Commissioner, I I will also add, thank you, Kim. Um uh we have been in discussions with First Five California about aligning more of our work. Um so really appreciate you noticing um some of those alignments.
Any other questions? Let's open it up for seeing none. Let's open it up for a public comment.
There are no public comments on this item.
Uh thank you very much. We thank you for the presentation. I understand this is a receive and file, so such will be the order. Thank you. Moving on to, uh and so I'll now close the public hearing. Moving on to Agenda Item Eight. Uh this presentation is a finance update with approval for the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And updated LTFP and approval for Resolution Twenty-Two-five dash zero-one. With that, let me turn it over to um our um staff for uh presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Really quick, as a quick recap, last month, we presented our proposed budget for next fiscal year. At the Budget and Finance Committee Meeting, as well as our Board of Commissioners Meeting. We did remind the board that the proposed budget was informed by the Long Term Financial Plan that was approved back in October. The Long Term Financial Plan in turn was further guided by ensuring consistency. And stability in our partners' work by having a step-down approach uh toward a steady sixty-million-dollar organization. Through fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and through fiscal year thirty-four, thirty-five. Um as a reminder, we also did a walkthrough of the programmatic budget in detail um at the Board of Commissioners Meeting last month. So for today, uh for more specifics about today, I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance, Raul. And Daisy, our Manager of Financial Planning Analysis, who is remote today. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Raul.
Thank you, JR. Uh before we go to the actual um action item, I do have some opening remarks that I would like to share. Um and that is for the commissioners. Um each year, we are tasked with exercising financial discipline. Uh making decisions grounded in our long-term financial goals. And strategic priorities rather than reacting hastily to the external pressures. Uh this discipline is not only a guiding principle. It is a necessity, especially now as we navigate ongoing federal uncertainty. And a broader, increasingly challenging fiscal environment. Financial discipline means staying consistent and focused. Even when short-term conditions might attempt us to cover. Attempt us to veer off course. For example, a temporary increase in our fund balance can create pressure to accelerate spending. But as we know, many of these fluctuations are due to timing and external factors beyond our control. Reacting to them without a long-term financial purview. Um may put us at risk of encountering a fiscal cliff in the future year. Especially if projected revenue shortfalls do materialize. The board's approval of the Long Term Financial Plan in the fall last year was a strategic decision. To create financial sust- sust- sustainability and to ensure continued impact across our initiatives. The Long Term Financial Plan is designed to support long-term viability. While thoughtfully considering short-term constraints. Its purpose is to sustain our investment, preserve our capacity to meet our future needs. And uphold the integrity of our mission well beyond the next budget cycle. The plan reflects a thoughtful step-down approach beginning fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And this year marks the first year of implementation. And the board's directive was clear, to limit the use of Proposition Ten resources to more. To no more than eighty million dollars for this year. The proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget that's before you today honors that directive. It reflects a total demand of approximately seventy-two point four million dollars in First Five LA's dollars. Well within the parameters set by the Long Term Financial Plan. It is also important to note that flexibility does exist within the annual budget process and subject to board approval. This process does provide the opportunity to make str- strategic adjustments as needed based on the evolving conditions. And management does view the Strategic Initiative Fund as a key area where such flexibility does reside in our budget. The these funds are specifically budgeted to support timely, high-impact opportunities. Align with our mission and strategic priorities. And also allowing us to respond with agility within the bounds of the fiscal discipline. And within the parameters of the Health and Safety Code that established First Five LA. As always, we remain committed to engaging in that dialogue with transparency. But we also urge continued caution and discipline as we navigate this evolving environment. And most importantly, the passage of this budget does send a strong message to our system leaders and to our community partners. That we are here with you in partnership. And most importantly, it tells the children zero to five of LA County that you matter. That they matter, that they all matter. And now I would like to pass it to Daisy. To go through the budget and the Long Term Financial Plan, and most importantly, to cover the um resolution.
Daisy.
Raul. Um good afternoon, commissioners, staff, and guests. I'm here today to present the final fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-six budget and the updated Long Term Financial Plan. As part of our request for approval of Resolution Number Twenty-Two-five hyphen zero-one. Today's presentation will provide a recap of the final fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, our administrative cost limit, key updates to the Long Term Financial Plan. And a summary of next steps. We will then request board approval for Resolif- Resolution Twenty-Two-five zero-one. Which formalizes these actions. Um before I begin, I would like to note that although the budget is an iterative process. We haven't made any additional changes to the materials shared at the May eighth meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So we will start with a review of the uh fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six final proposed budget. So as a reminder, the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget totals eighty million dollars. Representing a net decrease of eleven point seven million dollars, or twelve point eight percent compared to the current year. Most of the reduction, about uh ten point four million, or fourteen point nine percent. Comes from total program spending excluding program support. Including program support, the total program cost decreased by ten million dollars, or twelve point nine percent. On the administrative side, we are seeing a net decrease of one point seven million dollars, or twelve point one percent. Which I will touch on in more detail shortly. Um it's also worth noting that we've included nearly four point eight million dollars to the Strategic Initiatives Development Fund. So these are the funds that will allow us to be flexible and responsive to future needs and investments. In alignment with our strategic plan and our broader organization guidelines and goals. While the budget presented today encompasses only one year's planned expenditures. It is one component of a longer-term spending plan to effectively utilize and responsibly manage our resources. So we continue to diversify our revenue streams. This includes securing external funding sources outside of First Five LA's Proposition Ten funding. Which is an important step in sustaining our mission as Proposition Ten revenues continue to decline. I'll address how this supports our long-term plan in just a moment. Um but as indicated in these tables, the final projected additional funding outside of First Five LA's Proposition Ten dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Is approximately seven point six million dollars, reducing the actual estimated net demand on First Five LA's resources. From eighty million dollars to approximately seventy-two point four million dollars. So First Five LA will continue to amplify its efforts to diversify our revenues. And explore other alternative revenue generating sustainability strategies for the future. As well as pursue opportunities to partner and leverage funding from other organizations to support the work. Of the organization on behalf of the children and families of Los Angeles County. The administrative cost limit for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is approximately twelve point seven million dollars. Or fifteen point eight-two percent of the total budget. This reflects a decrease of one point seven million dollars compared to last year's revised administrative budget. Or fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five's revised administrative budget of roughly fourteen point four million dollars. So the slight percentage increase from fifteen point six-nine percent to fifteen point eight-two percent this year. Is a result of the overall decrease in the total budget and does not represent an increase in administrative costs. Our methodology includes all administrative departments and sixty-five percent of personnel costs. Including salary and benefits for pro- program leadership and administrative support roles. As previously discussed, which is grounded in the time survey that was administered in August twenty-twenty-four. The key takeaway is a budget that aligns with board-approved spending limits, prioritizes sustainability. And supports the adaptable implementation of evolving strategic initiatives. So having reviewed the broader context of our final fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six draft budget. We can move on to a reminder of the updates to the Long Term Financial Plan, which prioritizes continuity and stability. So turning to our Long Term Financial Plan, or LTFP, there are several key assumptions and updates. Annual spending limits were approved by the board in October twenty-twenty-four. And were holding to a roughly thirteen point percent annual decline on average. From fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six through fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, with some possible fluctuation along the way. Spending is then anticipated to stabilize through fiscal year thirty-four, thirty-five, based on the current approved LTFP. The reserve policy remains at fifty percent of the total budget. And revenue projections have been updated based on the latest information from the Department of Finance and the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. So these adjustments reflect our efforts to manage long-term sustainability while continuing to preserve our program impact. As a result of these adjustments, we are projecting a modest increase in Proposition Ten revenue. There's also an increase in external funding, and consequently, we are seeing an increase in our projected available ending fund balance at fiscal year and thirty-four, thirty-five. Uh however, I would like to note that ongoing annual changes in spending and revenues will cause this projected fund balance to fluctuate. And we will continue to closely monitor these impacts. And again, just a quick overview and recap of our slide, our visual. Um this graph summarizes our updated revenue and expenditure projections based on the most recent data. So as you can see, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is year one of the approved LTFP. And we're maintaining alignment with board-approved spending limits. While strengthening our financial position with a responsible use of the fund balance to support ongoing impact. So as always, we will continue to monitor the revenues and expenditures, as well as the long-term impact to our fund balance. And we will continue to explore and try to identify new sources of funding and partnership that could help support and advance. Our common strategic goals. Next steps, just a quick recap of our timeline. Uh in May, the Budget and Finance and Executive Committees reviewed the draft budget and uh part of the LTFP. On May eighth, we presented a high-level overview of the draft budget and updated LTFP to the full commission. And today, we are presenting the final twenty-five, twenty-six budget and L- updated LTFP uh for your approval. Um so again, this item will require a recorded vote by the board. But before I turn it back over to the chair for any questions, I would like to summarize the items that we are requesting action on. Uh so we respectfully request approval of Resolution Number Twenty-Two-five zero-one, which includes the following actions. Adoption of the eighty-million-dollar budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Approval of the twelve point seven million administrative cost limit. Reaffirmation of GASB fifty-four constraints totaling approximately sixty-two million in committed funds. So these funds are the board-approved funds, and it doesn't include administrative costs. So this amount in committed dollars will be affirmed through the audit process, will which will be shared with the board for information in September. And action in October of this year. Uh we are also requesting maintenance of our fifty percent fund balance reserve, uh which represents forty million dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And we are also requesting formal assignment of future funds through the LTFP through fiscal year thirty-four, thirty-five. Um so this resolution also supersedes the prior resolution, number Twenty-Two-four zero-two, approved in June twenty-twenty-four. And all materials pertaining to these requests are included in today's board book. The development of the budget is a collaborative process. And I would like to thank staff and board members for your time and partnership. Um and we, at this time, respectfully request uh approval of Resolution. Twenty-two-five zero-one. Um and I would like to add on a personal note um that my heart goes out to the. Children, families, and individuals that are being uh traumatized by acts of hostility. And whose humanity is being violated. Um so at this time, I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair, for questions and comments.
Ms. Lopez, thank you for your sentiments. Uh we share them with you. Any uh questions or comments? On the request for approval of the resolution that reflects our budget? Uh Commissioner McBride.
No questions, just a deep appreciation for the work that's gone into this. Um for anybody who may just be tuning in today, for the first time, this has been a long, slow, thoughtful process. There've been several conversations in this space and committee meetings. Where every question we asked has been not only answered, but followed up on with information we maybe didn't ask. But you felt the need to share with us, and so I just want to thank you um creating budgets and approving budgets, esp- especially long-term financial plans. When the future is so um uncertain, is almost like an impossible task. So I just want to thank you, your team, everyone who's here, staff who are not here right now. I really appreciate this.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on Agenda Item Number Eight?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Um I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And updated Long Term Financial Plan, and to approve Resolution Twenty-Two-five dash zero-one. I'll take it from you, Mr. Burden, as committee chair. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Um Ms. Voe, can you call the role for me?
Robert Bird.
Yes.
Alma Cortez.
Yes.
Priya Batra.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yep.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Carol Sagala.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, and thank you again for all your hard work and effort. Um given the fact that we uh passed a motion to. Hunt, for the lack of a better term. Several of these agenda items, let me move to, we that we punted Agenda Items nine, ten, and eleven to a future meeting. Let me proceed to Agenda Item Twelve, Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda.
Confirming there are no public comments for items not on the agenda.
Before I adjourn, are there any other bit, is there any other business that I should, we should consider or call on before we adjourn? Hearing none. We are adjourned, and our next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you all. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.